Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the July 17, 2018 Post Falls City Council meeting. Shannon will note that all council members are present. There are three public hearings tonight, so if anyone wishes to speak during the public hearings, there are forms in the back, fill them out, please turn them into our clerk, and if you wish to comment or speak to us or just have your comments noted. Ceremonies, appointments, announcements, we do have a few announcements. The annual Post Falls Police K-9 Golf Tournament is this Friday, July 20 at the Lynx Golf Course. There is still time to register to play or sponsor a team for the event. All funds collected during the event go to the Post Falls Police K-9 Program. For more information, visit the police department's homepage or Facebook page. Post Falls Community Blood Drive is Tuesday, July 24 from 9 to 11 a.m. in the Post Falls City Hall parking lot. You can schedule appointments online through the city's Facebook page or homepage. The city is hosting a third open house for the city center parking plan on Thursday, August 2 from 6 to 7:30 p.m. here at City Hall. Staff will give an update on the project's progress, and the public is invited to attend and comment on the project. I encourage you to attend and share your comments and ideas about the future city center. Post Falls Sprint Triathlon and Duathlon is Sunday, August 5 at 8 a.m. at Comelon Park. You can compete as an individual or a team. If you are interested in competing or volunteering, visit the city's website, www/postfallsidaho.org for details. Were there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
Yes.
Awesome.
We would like to ask you to remove items, public hearing item A and ordinance D regarding the de-annexation of areas from the East Post Falls Urban Renewal District from the agenda.
Have a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Are there any declarations of conflict? Shannon and Shelley, would you please provide, present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the July 3, 2018 city council meeting. Item B is minutes from the June 28, 2018 joint workshop with Urban Renewal. Item C is payables June 26 through July 9, 2018. Item D is Third Avenue Recreation Activity Center Design Services Contract with Bernardo Wills Architects. Item E is Haven North Annexation Agreement. Item F is Haven North Master Development Agreement. Item G is purchase of Syringa Park Spray Pad Equipment from Fountain People. Item H is water side at Prairie Falls Subdivision Plaid Application. Item I is Jasmine Edition Subdivision Plaid Application. Item J is 2012 Water Reclamation Collection System Master Plan Amendment with the Northeast Quadrant Sanitary Sewer Study. Item K is contract with Terra Landscaping for the Tullamore Park Irrigation System and Hydracede Design Build. And item L is Beyond Green Annexation Agreement Tech Park.
I have a question. Brian, it might be for you, on a couple of the items in the consent calendar where we're being asked to approve contracts, I didn't see, and if I missed it, I apologize, but did we go out for bid, were there more than one bid received on these? I didn't see that in the write-up.
Okay. On the Terra Landscaping Contract, we did go out for an informal bid, so we requested of five qualified contractors on that item pursuant to Idaho state law. We only received one bid back. Contractors are busy right now. On the Recreation Service Design, that was selected from our professional consultant's short list.
Okay. Okay, thank you, just wanted to make sure that we were doing what we're supposed to be.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could I request that item D be moved to New Business? The recreational center design contract, I had several questions on that, so.
Mr. Wilson, any issue with doing that?
Yeah, so you would just make a motion to move that to New Business and vote on that motion?
I would move that we move item D from the consent calendar to New Business.
Motion second for the discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Now, please remind me to address it in New Business, please, because I'll forget. Okay. Any other questions or discussion on consent calendar? If not, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Thank you very much, motion passes. Next item up is public hearings, and we have removed item A. So the first public hearing tonight would be the 16th Avenue Annexation File, and with that, I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council, Lindsay King, Planning Department, here for the 16th Avenue Annexation. James Durbin is the owner, Drew Ditman with Lake City Engineering is the applicant. City Council is being asked to review the annexation request of approximately 4.84 acres and make a decision of approval for the proposed high-density multifamily R3 residential zoning. Planning and zoning on June 12, I believe, had recommended the R3 zoning, so they've already been through that. Project location is approximately east of Highway 41, just on the south end of 16th Avenue here in the hatched red area. It's not here on this map, but this is where the Goodwill is and the Belcelio Apartments, and then Highway 41 going down here. The surrounding zoning currently is in the red, our community commercial services along that Highway 41 and 16th corridor there. Here we have the R3 High Density Residential, and then our hatched area. Everything else in the white is still within Cootney County, and then the lighter yellow is R1 Single Family Residential. Again, the property is located generally on 16th and Highway 41, approximately 4.84 acres, currently within Cootney County as a single-family residential land use. There's no significant topology or vegetation about this site. Water is provided by Ross Point Water, and sewer would be provided by the City of Post Along with the annexation, you have zone change criteria which will, which you use to adopt the specific zoning, in this case, the high-density residential R3. There are six criteria. The first is being consistent with the future land use map. As you can see here, our future land use map shows in the yellow that the future designated land is residential. It doesn't delineate whether it's single-family or multifamily, it's just residential. Or, not orange, the red is commercial, and again, it doesn't delineate whether it's limited commercial or community commercial services. The second criteria is that it's consistent with the goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan. In your staff report, there is a comprehensive plan analysis that goes over all of those goals and policies. The staff finds that criteria consistent. The third is that zoning is assigned following considerations such as, with items such as street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features. This is to encourage a balance of land uses to help Post Falls remain desirable, stable, and a sustainable community. The street classification specifically for this area, 16th Avenue is a major collector where Highway 41 is a principal arterial, and these are all consistent, or these roads are consistent with the Transportation Master Plan, which can handle the development or potential future development of the high-density zoning. Traffic patterns, again, Highway 41 is a state highway, which will be approved upon starting, I believe, in 2020. They already have some designs for the plans. There will be a stoplight put in at 16th and Highway 41. I don't know the specific date as to when that's going to be put in, but I assume it's around 2020 with the completion of 2021. Existing development currently, I'm going to skip a couple slides here, currently, this is 16th Avenue and Highway 41 intersection. You can see you have the Goodwill building here, there's their parking lot and the sign, 16th is just over here, and you see the Belcelio Apartments. Everything, oops, pardon me. Let's see, the site is over here, you have a higher-density mobile home park to the south as well as to the east, and you have a residential development just to the north in that R3 High Density Zoning across Highway 41. You have some storage units and some other commercial developments. You also have a high commercial activity node here, you have Popeyes Chicken and some other food places, coffee places, Walmart's over here to the west, and you have your I-90 Highway 41 interchange there. Future land uses, we went through with that future land use map where it's designated as residential in that yellow shaded area. See, see where I'm at. As I said, there's no geographic or natural features that would prohibit any sort of development or delay any annexation, such as wetlands or natural features like that. Go through my list of pictures. The fourth criteria is commercial and high-density residential are typically assigned along streets with higher road classifications. As I spoke of earlier, Highway 41 being a principal arterial and 16th Avenue being a major collector, that would meet this zone change criteria. The high-density residential is suited for roads with these classifications, and the roads can handle this. The fifth criteria being limited or neighborhood commercial service, or commercial, and lower-density residential zoning are assigned for properties as they proceed farther away from the higher-intensity urban activity. As you can see here, you have this urban activity as it's developing, and some of these, these photos are not current, up-to-date, as it takes a while for those photos to get on to our GIS systems or the Google Maps. But these commercial corridor here, having that high-density buffer helps alleviate some issues as far as noise and glare, smells and things like that from the lower-density residential zones. So that would, this zone would fit with that essentially criteria. The last zoning criteria is industrial zoning. We're not asking for industrial zoning, so this zone criteria is not applicable. We did route all of these agencies for comments and review of the proposed annexation. We did receive comments from Cootney County Fire and Rescue and Post Falls Police Department, who were both neutral. I'll stand for any comments or questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Lindsay?
Lindsay, I hate to put you on the spot, because I should have probably gotten a hold of you before this, but if you'd go back to the zone change criteria, the first slide, there.
Oh, there we go.
Last sentence on the page says, "Encourage a balance of land uses to help Post Falls remain desirable, stable, and sustainable community." Do we have anything that tells us what the current balance in our city is in terms of R1 residential, R3 residential, commercial? Do we have anything that tells us what our capacity is for more multifamily, or the inventory, or the?
I'm going to defer to John Manley here.
Again, I apologize for putting you on the spot, John, I should have probably got a hold of you.
Oh, it's all good. So, we don't have anything specifics for like a land consumption rate per zoning district, and at what rate for supply and demand? What we do have is just general policies within the comprehensive plan that speak to what would create a more desirable or sustainable community. And that's where it goes into locating rooftops or higher densities next to your collector roadways, because in time, it's more likely where transit's going to be, or getting individuals closer to their places of employment, or generally along your higher intense roadways. So, it's more done through policy statements than an actual quantitative analysis of supply and demand per zoning district.
Okay, because I guess when I looked at this, and we've got another one coming up, and we'll talk about that one later, but this is a great place for multifamily, but it's just like, how much multifamily does the, can the city absorb, or how much, when do we get out of balance, when the city's 80% multifamily and 20% single-family?
Well, there is the intent to have additional workshops looking at the housing market and some of that supply and demand. The market's changing a little bit in what is in demand versus maybe historically. We're hoping to bring back some literature, something to you guys as part of a workshop. You know, we looked at, you know, forecasting 91,000 if that happens by 2035, or 105 by 2040. You know, if you have 23, 25, 28% multifamily, what's that net sum that you're going to need to meet that population? It does prove to be kind of like, wow, that's, you're looking at quite a bit of additional multifamily. When and what time? Right now, I would say we don't have a lot of guidance in our comp plan as far as the timing of those. We just have, is the use at a right location, does it meet our policies? And at this point in time, like for this proposal, you know, it is in a general appropriate location based off of our guiding policies within the comp plan.
Yeah, that's, that, the only part of it that I struggled with was this balance of land uses. We don't, do we keep information on vacancy rates and like capacity? Because I know, you know, we've got, we've approved a lot of multifamily in just recent months.
Yeah, the most recent report I saw was that June 1 of this year had a 1.2% vacancy rate for Cootney County. So, it's astonishing even for me, is that as fast as we are building them, how fast we're consuming them, because what couples with the vacancy rate is you have a high increase in rental rates with these units too. So, you have people wanting to work in the community, and so they battle with the affordability of home prices as well as their, the rental rates. And so, you would eventually, if the rental rates go up, you would suppose maybe the rental, as the vacancy rates increase, the, the rate could potentially decrease, making it more affordable for workforce with multifamily, but that's not occurred yet.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks.
Any questions for either John or Lindsay? Thank you. Thank you, Lindsay. Applicants wish to speak?
Drew Ditman, Lake City Engineering, 126 East Poplar Avenue in Coeur d'Alene, for the record. Thank you, Lindsay, for your presentation. Lindsay covered a lot of the stuff I was going to go over, so I'll be brief. Two things we're here to talk about tonight, annexation and zoning. As you guys know, annexation is subjective, as Council Wolf, Wolf had talked about, is it a good fit? Is it a logical extension for the city, orderly growth, those things? It's located adjacent to the city, the subject site, located next to two high road classifications. So, yes, from that standpoint, it seems like a logical fit for annexation. Zoning obviously is a little bit more objective, and as Lindsay went through the six criteria that are in your zoning ordinance for, for zoning criteria, I look at it a little bit as, like I've got up here, is it in conformance with the comp plan? Does it meet your master plans, your strategic plans, and is it consistent with the surrounding land uses? That kind of sums up those six things. We feel the R3 zoning does meet that criteria. It's, like I said, it's discussed in the staff report, there's a comprehensive plan analysis that we submitted, as well as one in the staff report that's in your packet, so I won't go into that. We feel it's consistent with the goals and policies in the comp plan. Staff has said the same thing. Lindsay talked a little bit about the Transportation Master Plan. You know, you want your higher-density uses, your more intense uses located next to those higher road classifications. You've got Highway 41, state highway, principal arterial, 16th Street is designated as a major collector. Those are two big streets, so that's really where you want your higher-intensity residential uses. Is it consistent with the surrounding land uses? I'll go back to this slide. So, we've got R3 property just across the street of 16th Avenue to the north, you've got commercial adjacent to Highway 41 all along that corridor, and although it's in the county, you've got property to the south and to the east that's zoned high-density residential in the county with the existing mobile home parks that are there. So, we do feel it's consistent with the surrounding land uses and compatible with the surrounding land uses. Lindsay covered a lot of the stuff I had, so I'll, I'll stand for questions.
Questions, Mr. Ditman.
I'll ask you the same question. As a, as a developer, do you look at the current capacity and?
We do, and I've had lots of conversations with John about that over, over our meetings that we have. There isn't really a magical number, is it? 20%, 25%, 30%? You can read all sorts of planning magazines and look on the website, and everybody tells you a different number. Generally, you see 20 to 30% multifamily ratio, is that the number? Yeah, I don't currently know what Post Falls is at. I don't know if you know about 23% is what Post Falls is currently at. I can tell you from a market side, supply and demand, there's, there's obviously a demand for multifamily, or I wouldn't be standing here right now. So, that's kind of how we look at it, so.
Do you, do you have a timeline on this project? Because I know the key for the improvements on Highway 41 and the light is important to it, so I was just wondering what your, what your timeline is.
Highway 41 is the 2020 project, I saw Bill and Rob over here, correct? 2020, yeah. So, that's a year and a half out. I, I don't know, I mean, if we went as fast as we could by the time we got through the entitlement projects, we could be under construction, you know, I'm throwing numbers out, maybe, maybe nine months from now, we'd be under construction, looking at a year to build. So, those timings seem to fit with the Highway 41 improvements, if we went, you know, full out right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak? Or testify. Wishing to speak in opposition, Mr. Bob Flowers. Bob, please come forward.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm not going to talk to you about what I think of multifamily, high-density zoning. What I'm going to talk to you about is public safety. And in just the last month, and I'm sure it could be backed up by your police department, there's been multi-vehicle accidents at 41 in Prairie, 41 in Pole Line, and at 41 and 16th. To approve more high-density housing before 41 improvements have been completed, which is two and a half years more than likely after the 2020 date, is just dumping gasoline on a fire. The location, yes, with multifamily all around it, but the amount of apartments, if you looked at your map along that 41 corridor in that area and saw how much and how many units you've approved along that 41 corridor, if they got built out right now, we'd have pure gridlock. The people there at 16th and 41 right now can't, can't get out on the highway if they want to come into town. It's, it's not really whether we should or shouldn't, or whether the rules do or don't justify it. It's really a public safety concern, because to dump more vehicles on that road, there's four point something acres. Say they put 18 units per acre, say 72 units, times 10 trips a day, which is what they say is the average trip, that's another 700 trips along that road, and on 41, every single day. It's wrong, we, we shouldn't put any more multifamily out there for right now, not till we get the improvements put in. Thank you.
Thank you. Also wishing to speak in opposition, Ann Hayes. Ann, I'm assuming you're going to talk, so I will not read your?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you. I, I want to reinforce what that gentleman just said. We live at Maverick Lane, which is not exactly catty-corner to this property. Last year, the Post Falls City Council denied?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Just for the record, would you please give your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ann Hayes. I live at 1117 North Maverick.
Thank you, sorry for the interruption.
That's okay, thank you. Last year, the city council denied the R2 annexation and zoning of a plot of land that is nearly catty-corner to this. The significant difference is that, that only had connection at one point. This is in fact adjacent to current city hall boundaries. However, the rationale cited by the city council for the previous denial was that the infrastructure of Highway 41 can't bear additional traffic impacts of high-density housing in this vicinity, and I think those reasons are directly relevant here. As was pointed out, already adjacent to the lot that is the subject of this application is a new apartment complex. That apartment complex, which wasn't completed before, is now complete. Yet, the 16th Street continues to have no traffic light at Highway 41, and will not have one until Highway 41 improvements have been completed, as I understand it. And approving the application at this time would exacerbate already unsupportable congestion along Highway 41 and at that intersection. It is currently manifestly unsafe to try to make a left turn off of 16th onto Highway 41. Most people I know don't do it, in fact, they cut through our dirt road often to avoid that intersection. As the housing along the Highway 41 corridor, which has, as that gentleman pointed out, they've been building and building and building, and people have now been moving in. And right now, the Highway 41 is, is, the traffic is insupportable. If, I would welcome you, any of you, to go out there on a Friday afternoon, starting at about 3, to try to get to Interstate 90. And, and I think it detrimentally affects the welfare and safety, as that gentleman pointed out, of the residents in this area. But in addition to the problems with Highway 41, and even assuming that the Highway 41, I mean, I know it will be completed, the improvements, but unless significant improvements are made to the Highway 41 Interstate 90 interchange, I don't think we can support tremendous amounts of residential along that 41 corridor, especially so close to that interchange. Highway 41 bears the brunt of access to Interstate 90, because there is a significant distance between that access and all the other points where you can access Interstate 90. Just personally, myself, I sat through, just the other day, three traffic cycles just to get on Interstate 90 heading east. I have to, I live right there on 41, that's how I get on the highway. I also, exiting Highway 90 onto 41, that curve, if you go out there at rush hour, you will see traffic backed all the way around the curve, almost directly onto Highway 90 now, where we're going to block traffic. If you, if, and that's the only access. You build more housing there, or you approve it, and people move in, it's going to make that traffic situation worse, and it's a dangerous situation, especially because coming off from Coeur d'Alene, there's a hill, and then you can't see that exit. You come off the hill and you see, and you've got, and you're going faster because of the hill, or, or, you know, your car wants to go faster, and you're hitting the brakes because you want to exit 41, and you're seeing a car right there on, at the end of the curve. I believe there are ways to alleviate that congestion at, at Interstate 90 and Highway 41, but as far as I know, nothing is being done to alleviate that. I know we're taking care of 41, but we're not taking care of that interchange.
Ma'am, and you wrap up, your time is up.
Okay, sorry. We're not against development, we understand the investors wants to make money, I, I support that, but I, I think this is kind of a pick and the poke, I think it's, it's, R3 is just way too dense for, for us to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ditman, rebuttal? Mr. Dibman, rebuttal?
Thank you, Mayor Jacobson, council members. Traffic, obviously, was the issue. We're here tonight for annexation and zoning, not apartment site approval. Now, are there going to be apartments there if the annexation and zoning is granted? Probably. I would assume there would be. Couple of things I want to point out. If and when apartments do come in, if they come in either with a special use permit or site plan, that gets reviewed by staff. Staff has a chance to look at some of these issues, look at the traffic, and vet out some of these issues at that time. Part of the Highway 41 improvements, as I said earlier, there is a traffic signal going in at 41 and 16th that's slated as part of those improvements for starting in 2020. So that will happen. And again, on this slide up here, you know, you look at zoning, is it in conformance with the comprehensive plan? Yes, we believe it's consistent. Staff has said they believe it's consistent. Is it in conformance with your master plans? It is. I want to read an excerpt out of the staff report, page 2 of the staff report. "The proposed zone change is consistent with the anticipated land development within the city's transportation master plan 2017 update, and is not anticipated to have any negative impacts to the city's transportation system, other than those that would be covered from the collection of impact fees at the time of individual lot development." So R3 or higher density was considered at this property during those updates, so it was part of your master plans. So with that, we obviously think it's a good fit.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Questions? Thanks.
That, I will close the public hearing. Council.
Since both of the people spoke about safety, would it be prudent to have Chief Knight speak to that? Whether that section of highway is unsafe?
So the hearing's been closed, so it would be too late to include that in the record for tonight, but certainly during a presentation later, we could have that discussion.
Well, when they come back for the development plan, I guess that's probably a better time to weigh that issue anyway.
Okay. Will that work for you?
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to close it out too early.
No, no, that's okay.
When they routed the agencies, I believe that the Post Falls Police answered neutral.
That's true.
And so I also sat through three lights on Highway 41 the other day, and I'm in my car a lot. And as most people up here know, I was raised here when this town didn't have any stoplights, and it was dirt roads. So yes, I think the traffic is becoming a problem. My opinion of this is, I believe it fits with the comprehensive plan. I do know that there's traffic problems, but I do also believe that the city engineers look at the site plans when they come, and the planning, John and Lindsey, obviously, look at the annexations and the zone chain, zone change applications, and give their opinions to the planning commission. So that's my...
Lynn, any comments?
That's my comments.
I just, I see the traffic as a major problem. I think the zoning and the annexation fits nicely with what's already in the surrounding area, but I see the traffic as our major issue, and I think that, obviously, the light at 16th is going to be more than helpful for everybody there, because the bigger problem is the left-hand turn off of 16th onto 41.
It's the timing thing. Steve?
I listened to Lynn and Linda. It's looking at our zoning requirements, where you do have the mobile homes, mobile home parks to the south and the other side, that I think this does fit in with that area. We don't have much control, I don't think, over the interchange at Highway 90 and 41. That's going to be more of a state issue and a federal government issue, but 41, with the traffic light coming in, hopefully the timing of those two projects will coincide with each other.
Okay.
My question is, just to be clear, before us right now is the annexation.
And zoning. And zoning.
And zoning, okay. Yeah, it's a tough one, because I don't disagree, and we've all been in the traffic on Highway 41, but the location is absolutely where you would want multifamily housing, and it will never be perfect. Yeah, it's a tough one. It's tough. I'd love to have the traffic be mitigated, but I think the timing of this will coincide, if in fact it's developed as multifamily.
Al?
Well, Mr. Dibman made the point. We are here to consider this as annexation and zoning and not the site plan review, which is another part of the process. You know, I guess I go back to what I was talking about earlier, and that's what's the city want as a city. Do we want to all be multifamily, or we want to be a good mix? We're going to have some meetings about this coming up to talk about that more in depth. As far as the traffic goes, I think traffic is more a market thing. I think it's more market. I mean, if somebody's deciding whether they want to rent an apartment in this location or someplace else, they're going to take that traffic into consideration. Do they want to have to come out every day and sit there and try to make their way out onto Highway 41 and onto I-5 or onto Highway 90? So I think that's more of a market thing. It fits. I would support approval.
Joe?
I'm the opposite. I would not. And again, the traffic and the livability of Post Falls is a big concern of mine. I live on the far east side of town, and if I want to come into town, I got to hit dysfunction junction every time. Spokane Street, Highway 41 are the two worst by a long shot in Post Falls. They're just, they're getting terrible. We don't have to annex anymore into the city. The property owner has the right to build whatever he wants according to county rules. We don't have to take it in, and I think now is not the time to do it. The traffic's too much of a mess. The town's losing its livability, in my opinion, just because of the massive amount of growth, particularly along that corridor and going up and down Spokane Street. There's not enough freeway access. That's not going to change for probably 15, 20 years at that spot. And if we keep just taking all comers and bringing them into the city and building and building and building, it's just going to become an unpleasant place to live. The reasons that people moved away from where they came from to come here are going to become the reasons that people like me are going to want to leave, and I don't think we need to do it.
Oh, and, you know, I've said for quite some time now that I question the number of multifamily units we have. You hear people in the real estate industry, not those that sell it, but those that analyze it, state that the vacancy factor is so low, it shows that there's a continued need. I also subscribe to the theory that you build it, and they will come. The more we build, the more we'll see. So this is a tough one. Again, I think location-wise, it makes perfect sense. Timing is a big issue for me as well. But again, tonight, we're sitting here looking at a annexation and zoning request, and we've seen the information, we've heard the presentations, we've looked at the facts. With that, you know, I'm going to ask for a motion. Whoever wants to flow in a motion, we'll see what happens.
I would move to approve the 16th Avenue annexation file ANNX-2225-2018 and the R3 zone.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion? Janet, please take the roll. I'm sorry. Go ahead, excuse me one more.
Just to address one of Mr. Wolf's points, that, you know, traffic is market-driven. I would disagree with that, too, because I'm not looking to get an apartment there, and the traffic affects me. That's a major intersection, I-90 going east and west, Highway 41 going north and south. It's going to affect a whole lot of people besides somebody who's just thinking about getting an apartment. So as a consideration to the existing residents of Post Falls, I think that we need to take that in consideration as well.
Good point. Motion second. Please take the roll.
Thorson?
I'm going to vote nay.
Orders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Nay.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next public hearing tonight is the Plummer Forest Zone Change. With that, I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, and members of City Council. John Manley, Planning Manager here, introducing the Plummer Forest Zone Change case file, RZNE 5, 2018. The owner of the land is Plummer Forest Products, Inc., with the applicant being Rand Wickman. And you're being asked to review a proposed zone change of approximately 18.4 acres and make a decision of approval of the proposed high-density R3 zoning designation for that land. June 12th, Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this zone change request. The project location is, as you see here in the red-hatched box or rectangle. It is just northwest of the intersection of Spencer and Third, a little bit southwest of the I-90 interchange, and just south of Celtae Way. Currently, this land is undeveloped timbered land with water and sewer being provided by the city of Post Falls. So looking at the zone change, we'll be looking at the six zone change criteria. Is it consistent with the future land use map? Is it consistent with goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan? And I'm going to tie those into the third one. Is zoning assigned following consideration of such items as street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, geographic and natural features? When it comes to the street classifications and traffic patterns, the staff report goes into an analysis of its consistency and compatibility with the Collector Road of Spencer and it being in close proximity to the arterial of Celtae Way. Looking at the zoning in the area, we recently, so we're looking at here, we have, in the gray is industrial, the red is the community commercial services. Actually, that darker gray is a heavy industrial, it's a legacy zone, and the lighter gray is an industrial zone.
Joe, what do you mean with the legacy zone?
So when they established these zoning districts, you had some pre-existing uses that were heavier in nature. So it's allowed for older uses. You can't apply and get heavy industrial anymore. So it's more of a grandfathered zoning district.
Thank you.
And then to the south of here, you see the brown, which is an RMHP zone. It's a residential mobile home park zone. It's similar in nature as the heavy industrial as being kind of a legacy zone. And then you have these other R3 zones just south of Third, transitioning to some lighter density R1 zoning to the south. Looking at the existing environment component of that third question, you see here, here's Celtae Way running east-west. This is the apartments that you see on Third Avenue just to the east of the proposed project area, which is right here. Promenade apartments, or condos, sorry, there's a dislocation. And then it migrates, as you go to the south, you can see a transition from this kind of heavier-density stuff along Third to the lesser dense as you get closer to the river, which is south or to the right in this image. Looking at compatibility and some of the elements of the goals and policies analysis in the staff report, looking at, is the proposal close to like a bus route or for sustainability questions? And you have two bus stops within a half a mile of the proposed site at this location here, and it's highlighted in yellow. So this would, being the fact that it's close to bus route, would be complementary to a multifamily housing project. Looking at the future land use element, that was in question three and in one of the criteria, we recently amended the map at this location to be residential. So being the fact that it's now deemed residential would be consistent. Our current map doesn't delineate for designations of residential. The residential designation is complementary to one unit per acre or 18 unit per acre. Our current comprehensive plan guides growth more by policies than any sort of delineation in a mapping element. There were no real significant geographic or topology-type issues of the, on this site, other than the trees and vegetation. So the fourth criteria is commercial and high-density residential zoning would typically be found along streets of higher road classifications. So being the fact that it's close to Celtae Way and the Collector of Spencer would be compatible with that criteria. The next one, limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned to properties further away from higher-intense urban activity to ensure that adequate land is available for future housing needs. So this criteria is a lot of times directed towards lower-density proposals. Is the proposal of less density away from your urban cores? So the inverse would be true. That means it's also trying to encourage your, coupled with the previous criteria, is your higher-intense uses getting closer to your urban cores? The next one is, deals with industrial zoning, which wouldn't be applicable with the request, other than the fact that there is a few industrial policies in the comprehensive plan that alludes to the fact that, I know in the past, there's been concern that by reducing the industrial, we're losing opportunities for industrial growth. But you look at some of the policies saying industrial development should be located away from residential and near other industrial uses. And so being the fact that this site is surrounded by residential, it evolving, this area evolving away from industrial would be more compatible with policies found in the comp plan. So there were agencies routed in this proposed zone change request. You see them here. Both the Cutney County Fire and Police did make comments. They were neutral regarding the proposal. So at this point, I'd stand for any questions you have.
Any questions, John, at this point? See none? Thank you.
Right, thank you.
The option wish to speak?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Mary Shaw. I'm here on behalf of Rand Wickman Planning, and we are representing the property owner, Plummer Forest Products. The subject property is a portion of a larger parcel and consists of slightly more than 18 acres. Council approved the property owner's request earlier this month for an amendment to the city's comp plan to designate the subject property as residential on the future land use map. This parcel was acquired by Plummer Forest Products in 2010 as an option for future expansion, and as you may recall, the mill produces particle board with a formaldehyde-free process, and it's been determined at this time that there is no need for future expansion. For your consideration tonight, the property owner is requesting a zone change from the existing heavy industrial zone to a proposed zone of residential R3. Planning Commission recommended approval of the applicant's request for a zone change in June. These are some site photos taken from various aspects at Potlatch Road. Again, site photos taken of views from Spencer Street and the intersection of Third and Spencer. And finally, site photos of views from north to south, south to north, and southeast from the intersection of Spencer and Third and Spencer Street. Staff comments have been in support of the applicant's request, and the proposed zone change meets the city's future goals for growth and development, as stated in the city's comp plan. The proposed R3 zone district is compatible with existing residential zoning and is consistent with current development patterns. The R3 high-density zone provides a perfect transitional buffer between higher-intense uses and existing residential development. And in addition, the requested zone change will maximize the city's investment in infrastructure... And in addition, the requested zone change will maximize the city's investment in infrastructure in this area. The request for zone change to R3 meets the city's criteria for transit, parks, transportation, parks, and services. And for your reference, this is a brief depiction of the surrounding adjacent residential development with the subject property noted in the starred area. Lower-density residential and commercial zones are not ideal in this particular location for a number of reasons. And I would also like to point out that a similar zone change was approved by the city for a parcel just about three-quarters of a mile to the west of the subject property, and that zone change was from high, from heavy industrial to residential R3. Google Earth photo showing much of the same in 1998, not much has changed. And that concludes my portion of the presentation, and I would stand for questions. I'd also like to let you know that Mr. Brinkmeyer, the property owner, is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions to Ms. Shaw? Does Mr. Brinkmeyer wish to speak, or only if there's questions?
I believe so, yes, thank you.
Mayor, City Council, Todd Brinkmeyer. I own Plumber Forest Products. Was before you a short time ago, so I won't regale you with the plant history again. But I think it's worth reiterating. I believe strongly in industrial jobs. It's how I've achieved any economic success in the world, and I have no intention of taking that plant anywhere. But that's a tough site. We're captive to the railroad. The railroad comes once a week under duress. Without the railroad, that particle board plant isn't viable. Our customers are in the Midwest, central United States, and we can't afford to truck there. Plus, we import our resin all via rail. So in looking forward and trying to be long-term proactive, I spent a fair bit of time with people that are smarter than me and know more than me about land use, and that was the conclusion. We have a trailer park to the south. We have, the community has come in around the facility, and I think it's a decent R3 location. I'm sure that everybody that stands at this podium before you says the same thing. But I think it makes sense to do this here. I hope that we can do a good job, quality over quantity. And there's an economic tipping point. To your point, at some point, there's going to be more apartments, and then rents decrease, the viability of these investments, all of that changes. We're not there yet. Maybe we can see it from where we are, but we're the fastest-growing state in the nation, too. So we're dealing with a new world somewhat, even in North Idaho. So I'd ask you to consider all those things. I think incorporating the Centennial Trail and trying to make it as good a project as it possibly can be is important and certainly one of my goals. Any questions?
Questions to Brinkmeyer? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Shannon, anyone wishing to testify? Wishing to speak in opposition, Belinda Jones?
Guys, I am Belinda Jones, and I hear their impassioned pleas, and I almost fall for it myself, but yet I can dovetail onto Councilmember Malloy's statement in who we want to be. And that's really why I'm here, you guys, is who do we want to be in Post Falls? I mean, the very reason that people are moving here is the very reason that's diluting why they're moving here and why we're experiencing this growth. So, you know, we have to look to you all, but just because we check boxes and it fits within a plan doesn't mean we have to do it. We can be blinded by the dollars that might come in because of it, but you need to step back and establish your budget based on taxes that come in, not our taxes based on the budget, because we know how this works. We're going to build and build, and pretty soon, our schools are bursting at the seams. We've proven here, part of who we are is that we love our children, so we're going to pass the bonds. There goes our taxes, right? Well, next, what about stormwater? We are covering our amazing aquifer with more concrete and pavement. So what about a stormwater plan? What are we doing with those things? How are we dealing with that? I know we have a good rain in my neighborhood, and I'm literally out pushing water out of my own yard because it can't keep up. We, so we need to deal with that. Another one of my favorites is wastewater treatment. How are we going to deal with this? Have you guys thought about that in the plan? And that our wastewater treatment facility's bursting over, and pretty soon, we're number one in the number-two business, as they like to say. But my favorite, so I got to say, you know, who do we want to be? My favorite is, wouldn't it be great if when this bubble bursts, and it will burst again, if my house in Post Falls would be as equally as desirable as it is today, because people still want to live here? People from Coeur d'Alene and Hayden will want to move to Post Falls because we decided who we wanted to be with ample green space. I think to speak to you, Mr. Wolf, and what you're saying, we don't have a plan, but it checks boxes, so it must be okay. It's not okay. I don't think that's who we want to be. And when I moved here 30 years and figured I'd be a bloated, rotting carcass when they called me out, I don't see that being the case anymore. It's not Archim, it's not Post Falls anymore. It's not who we wanted to be. So I really wanted to share something that I saw, a quote the other day, that says, "I've always looked forward more to the future of Post Falls than the past. I consider Post Falls a stable town, an ideal place to live. We're not citified, and we're not rural, but we have many of the advantages of both, and we're truly an American town." And I'm just curious if you all might know who said that? Because that would be Frederick Post that said that. And are we becoming more citified than rural? Do we still have a fine balance of both? Just because we can, don't mean that we should. But should you decide to continue to pass these things, I hope you set aside enough money to buy a couple gallons of paint, because that statement is on the walls of our community developed apartment office wall. So please, who do we want to be, guys? Make that decision before we start paintbrushing and change our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Also wishing to speak in opposition, Bob Flowers.
Bob Flowers, good evening again, folks. I went down there into that area to really take a good look at it. Darn near got clipped by a chip truck. Where are these people going to go? 18-point-something acres there means could be a good 300-unit apartment complex. Times 10 trips a day, 3,000 more trips on them roads. That road ain't wide enough for anything. They say they're going to dump out on Spencer, but what these maps aren't showing is what's already been approved to be put in on the east side of Spencer, almost directly across from this property. Spencer, since the city has taken it through to Celtae, has basically filled up. When you finally build out to what you've already approved in that area, Spencer's going to be overloaded. And the other streets, well, Potlatch, it can't handle that kind of traffic, and that little road that's on the south edge of that property, it sure can't handle that. I mean, they showed some really nice, pretty pictures, but did you notice how narrow all that was? It doesn't make your criteria. It says major arterials. Well, I tell you what, you got a railroad track on the north, you got Spencer on the east, it's, you know, getting pretty close to capacity. You got Potlatch on the west side, which is, I'm not sure what that road is classified at. The semis have a hard time getting up and down it. But it doesn't, it, we just don't need 300 more apartments. And with my last count, the percentage in the city of Post Falls is now, I could be wrong, John, you could be right on this, but I believe it's at 26% of our residential units now are apartments with what has been approved. Enough is enough, folks. We don't need to be chopping down trees so we can build more apartments. That just, that just doesn't make any sense. We need our trees here in Post Falls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, thank you again. Mary Shaw, on behalf of Rand Wickman Planning. I'd like to say a couple of things in light of earlier discussion heard this evening about development. The fact is that towns and cities are in the business of growing to survive, and how that growth happens is up to you folks. Development pays for growth, pays for infrastructure. You have regulations in place that will dictate how this growth occurs and how the infrastructure required will be constructed to go along with it. This particular location is an ideal location for R3, looking at the overall growth in your city. And I would like to also say that multifamily development actually creates less traffic trips than single-family development, if you understand and look at traffic studies. And because of this location, again, location in proximity to transit, it's very, very ideal. Finally, let's take a look at your zoning map here. You want to know what the percentage of multifamily zoning is currently. I'm not talking about build-out, I'm just talking about what's allocated for zoning allowed today in the city limits. The yellow is single-family or low-density residential. The orange is your high-density residential. So what that equates to in terms of percentage, I can't honestly say, but you can see that I doubt it is 20-something percent. I don't know. But that's a good way for you to, moving forward, have a better understanding of how your city's going to build out, so. Any questions?
Questions to Ms. Shaw?
I don't know if this is maybe a question for Ms. Shaw or John.
Sure.
I'm assuming any improvements to that property would mean improvements to Third Street and Potlatch Road, or?
Yeah, so as part of a multifamily project, they go through, it's called a site plan review process. And so Third Avenue would run along the southern boundary. So of a site of 18 acres, they generally do that in phases, and they do the portion of Third adjacent to their project. So more than likely, you would get ultimately through either two or three, four phases, Third Street built out to the west at a, I think it's a collector, but I'll look at Rob. Rob may know the actual road classification of both Third and Potlatch, that would be to the west and south of the site.
Rob?
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. In how that would development, develop as a major collector roadway, a major collector is 54 feet curb face to curb face. It's a three-lane road section with bike lanes on it. Regardless of how they would phase the site, our first priority is to make sure we have enough roadway capacity to handle whatever phases they are putting in there and to provide in a safe manner. So for instance, if that site was to develop on the far west end of it first, the most capable roadway of handling the traffic coming off that site is Spencer Street. So most likely, we would see that the roadway would start from Spencer Street and widen to the west. So I would anticipate that from a phasing standpoint, it would be most prudent for a developer to look at it phasing from the east end of the property and work its way west. Hypothetically speaking, if they wanted to work the other direction, I would think that engineering staff would be very reluctant and would try to push, seeing the entire roadway constructed from Spencer Street, just because in its current condition, as was stated in the public testimony, it is not in a position to handle today multifamily development until those road improvements are put in to a level to handle the approximately 3,000 trips if you had 300 apartments go in.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Any other questions? Seeing that, there are no further questions at this point, I will close the public hearing. Council, how would you like to act?
My concern here is similar to the last public hearing we just had, is the proximity to the interchange of I-90 and Highway 41 at this time. This project isn't spilling directly onto Highway 41. However, there is no access onto I-90 West at Celtae, at the Celtae interchange, so anybody getting on the freeway going either direction is going to go to Highway 41 and that intersection. And at that time, and we all know what the traffic situation's there now, so that's the concern I have with this one, similar to the last one. I think it's a great place for apartments, it's just is now the right time without the proper improvements to that interchange.
Go ahead.
Well, I think the two, how the two are different to me is you've got Celtae Way, not everyone uses I-90. And boy, I don't know where people are going 10 trips a day, but not everyone uses I-90. Celtae is the proximity of this project to Celtae, and the access to public transportation is really an ideal place for multifamily. And I, if I could just address the who we want to be, it depends on who you ask and when you asked it. I came here, not quite as early as Linda, but I came here, and thank goodness, there was multifamily housing, because myself and my daughters lived in a fourplex until a year later, we bought a house in Pioneer Ridge that had 24 houses, then now there's 300 or so houses. I mean, it just depends on when you're asking that, but the one thing that I will say about Post Falls is it really doesn't, it's the people that make this community. And from 4,500 people when I first came here to 33,000 now, it is and always will be the people that make this community. And some people who live in apartments become homeowners, and they become engaged members of the community. So I would be inclined on this one to approve it, because it isn't on Highway 41, but for a variety of reasons, the location is perfect.
Anyone else could weigh in? Good. That'd entertain a motion.
Well, I would move to approve the Plumber Forest Zone Change File Number, RZN-005-2018. Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Nay.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next item up is unfinished business. Tonight, we have none, followed by citizens' issues. And this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. And if anyone cares to address the council, please come forward and give your name for Seeing a tease, but no action. We will move into new business, and there is a second item tonight. But the first item under new business is a Post Falls Technology District Eligibility Report and Request for Status of Deterioration. And is Mr. Marshall presenting on that, Shelley, or?
Good.
Brad, before you start, we'll have you give your name for the record, but know that we did all receive your summary. we did all receive your summary with the several pages, I think, of explanation, so we have seen that, have read that, but we will listen to your comments.
Perfect. Okay. I'm ready. Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Brad Marshall with JEB Engineers, 7825 Meadow Oak Way in Coeur d'Alene. Again, it's a pleasure to represent Beyond Green Incorporated, which is previously called Prairie Crossing West, they restructured the organization, also represent Coeur d'Alene Development. Again, we're requesting a status of deterioration for an area primarily along the east side of Highway 41 that extends up to Prairie Avenue to Hayden Avenue. I will try to be brief, because there is a very detailed eligibility report that's in your packet, but I recognize that. But with that said, I also respect the viewing audience and the audience and the auditorium. Again, the area is actually indicated by the dark heavy line along Highway 41. So the, the dark heavy line extends from 12th Avenue along the east side of Highway 41 up to Prairie Avenue, kind of rolls around, it was called Northland Nursery, which is in the county jurisdiction, extends west around the Technology Park, that's finished up annexation tonight, goes to Hayden Avenue, comes down the east side of Highway 41, crosses the proposed shopping center, which is within the city limits at Prairie and Highway 41, and then extends easterly to Meyer Avenue and then rolls back down to 12th Avenue. Kind of what drives that area is the inland northwest Technology Park, the shopping center on the east, northeast corner, Highway 41 and Prairie, Foxtail to some degree, and particularly what are called off-site sewer improvements that are part of development of this, this corridor. These include a potential new lift station, or sometimes we call it an equalization basin, some sewer main facilities from 12th that run up the corridor. And that, that's kind of what that drives that boundary. That boundary was kind of developed through many meetings with the Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency, your, your staff and development interests. Little history, back in 2002 and again in 2005, the Post Falls City Council passed resolutions determining this, the east Post Falls area was deteriorated, primarily around Highway 41 and, and I-90 area. Then they passed another, another resolution in 2005 to extend that deteriorated area to Prairie Avenue, primarily on the east side, east side of the road. This isn't the best map, it's kind of an ugly map, but that, that area indicates that prior status of deterioration. That was again, really the prerequisite of the east Post Falls Urban Renewal District that has done some tremendous things in our area, has developed the funding stream for the Greens Ferry overpass, the trail under Highway 41, the Spencer Street connection, great stuff that came out of those urban renewal projects. As many of us are aware, the first step in creating an urban renewal district, which may become for the agent, the council, is a declaration of deterioration. After that deterioration is made, we'll proceed with an urban renewal plan. When looking at that status of deterioration, you look at Idaho Code 502018 and 502903, there's about a dozen criteria in there that we evaluated as part of this status of deterioration request. I'm going to be real brief, jump kind of through those criteria. If you look at the heading, the big dark lettering is the criteria, the below it is kind of the response to it. And is there a substantial number of deteriorating structures? And there's more than a dozen structures, particularly on the east side of Highway 41 in the area, that were developed in the county, priority annexation, they're deteriorating prior to redevelopment. Next criteria is defective or inadequate street layout. If you think to that, the corridor, particularly the cross streets, many of the streets, whether it's 12th or Horseaven or 16th or Prairie, those streets were developed on a grid, typically a quarter every mile, they were developed in the county, typically a county road section, maybe 28 feet wide, no curb, no gutter, no drainage facilities, no sidewalk. So fundamentally, they are inadequate streets at this point in time. Another criteria is faulty layout in relationship to size, accessibility, usefulness. Again, if you think of that area, a lot of it was developed in the county, and it's today, it's five, 10, 20 acre parcels that are challenging to, they're developed in the county, then annexed in, and somewhat challenging to redevelop. In sanitary unsafe conditions, again, if you look at the corridor, you'll see a fair amount of noxious weeds, some unkept lots and yards. Again, most of the streets lack sidewalks for pedestrian safety prior to development. Deterioration of site and other improvements, this is like particularly on an existing site, like parking lots, fences, landscape areas, again, a lot of the areas that were developed in the county, priority annexation, they have poor parking, poor fencing, poor landscaping, all in need of development. Diversity of ownership, another criteria, there's a wide variety of, of ownership along this project area, five and 10 acre parcels, some large parcels, which makes it somewhat challenging to, to develop, because you don't have kind of that clean slate, I guess you could say. So there's a diverse ownership. The existence of conditions which endanger life or property by fire and other causes. Again, there are some water mains, and there are some hydrants in the area, we've got fire, all in the fire district, but the fact is, there's a need for additional water mains and additional hydrants and funding sources for those. And then the last criteria is kind of a combination of all those other factors, it's that catch-all, I guess you could say, and we think we meet many of those criteria. Again, based on Idaho Code and the conditions which exist in the area, we believe that the area is deteriorated. Subject area has similar conditions as the prior deteriorations, decisions that were made in 2002, 2005. And most recently, your Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency passed a resolution stating this area was deteriorated, forwarding that to you unanimously. With all that said, on behalf of the applicants, I would respectfully request a status of deterioration.
Question to Mr. Marshall. And we do need a vote, thank you, Brett, we do need a.
There's a resolution later on the agenda.
Okay. So if there's no discussion, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
The only thing I would say is I appreciated the information on deterioration, because I did not realize it was, had so many moving parts to it, so it's nice to have that.
The summary provided.
Yeah.
That we received in our packet was very good.
Yeah.
So next item is the item we moved from the consent calendar to new business, and that would be the Third Avenue Recreation Activities Center Design. Mr. Wolf?
I guess Brian's going to answer my question. Brian, the biggest thing that I had a question about on that was $7,000 set aside for design of something behind the building. And I guess I was of the mind that we were focusing right now on the interior of the building and doing, moving projects and things there, but $7,000 seemed like a lot of money for something that was going on behind. So if you could expand on what that's all about, I'd really appreciate it.
Sure. The, the area behind the former senior thrift store is an area that is currently being utilized by New Vision School for Community Garden Area. Just to the east, or sorry, just to the west of that location, we have our existing community garden facility, so we're serving the public with a city facility at that level, just, just a little ways away. And we've met with the individual that's helping direct those students, and we're kind of refocusing their efforts to that other city facility just a little ways away. The existing conditions of those facilities that have been maintained by those students are going to pose a large maintenance issue for our staff as they were constructed, and also have some level of risk of trip and fall hazards and such as they've been installed. So we want to have something that gives us direction on how we're going to proceed moving forward with that in that space. And there's also the Centennial Trail Connection, and as it relates to that multifamily development that sits just to the north of the site, how all of those dynamics are going to interrelate and how they're going to function within that space. There's some opportunity for some outdoor classroom type activities that will also support the, the use as a recreation facility, whether that be some of our kids' top sports type activities within some small open lawn area, or some of those activities that Tracy has kind of looked at as possibilities for that backyard area. Also some potential for cultural or, or arts type classes that could happen in that outdoor space. So it's trying to cast a vision for what that backyard area can be utilized for, that also are supported by those other internal structures and the restroom facilities that are associated with the, the larger facility.
Would you say that that piece of it is really important to the overall design? I guess I'm still having, I'm still hung up on $7,000 in design alone for basically a backyard.
Sure. The other dynamic that's in play here is it is a change of use from a retail to assembly use. So we have to present a site plan for what that site will look like, so we do have to have some level of landscape design for how that backyard would be developed, similar to what any developer would if they're applying for a change of use on a site. So one way or another, we have to come up with something that's going to happen there. It could, it could just be irrigated turf, and then we could come back in and do this level of design at some point in the future. But what does that look like? And where, where do we, do we make that happen? And when do we make that decision to go back and redevelop on an existing site? I've heard it say the only thing, only thing permanent is something that's temporary, when you talk about parks, and often you, you'll look at, well, we won't come back and look at this site 10 years down the road and look at what we can do with that space and try to make it work, and it'll always be a half measure. So as we're looking at development at this point, that's why we're trying to look at that and have a full site that's functional for our public at this point in time.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Any other questions, comments? That'd entertain a motion on this particular item that was moved from the consent calendar.
Move to approve the Third Avenue Recreation Activities Center Design Services Contract with Bernardo Wills Architects.
Second.
Motion seconds, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
No.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Brian, thanks for your explanation. Next item up is administrative staff reports, and we have two tonight. First is community forest update, Mr. Beecham, Mr. Myers.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, and John Beecham, the Utilities Manager. I've already met Brian Myers, Parks Manager for the city. We're doing a joint presentation tonight. This is an update on community forests, which is properties we've acquired south of the river near Camelan Park. Opportunity for you to ask questions and also just a quick update as far as what we're doing this summer and our plans moving forward. This is a map that the Parks Department with our GIS group put together. I wanted to put it up early in the presentation, I know Brian will talk more about the map specifically later, but just to give you an idea of the property we're talking about, you can see Camelan Park in the green, there on the right-hand side of the map, and then Spokane Street is on the far right, so this is the property south of the river to the west of Spokane Street. Some of the items we're going to go through on our quick update tonight, belabor that point, and then just a couple of pictures interspersed throughout here to keep things entertaining. First thing was a name, we had to come up with a working title for this, it's been called Lost Mine, Lost Falls, Upper Falls, there have been other names thrown out. Ultimately, what we settled on for a working title is to call it what it is, which is a forest owned by the community or the Post Falls Community Forest. The current status of this property is open to the public, we have signs up to that effect. Non-motorized recreation is allowed on the property. We are considering bringing this forward with an annexation request, there's multiple steps to that, so it's not something we're actively working on for next month or anything. And Brian and I are working on developing a memorandum of understanding between two different departments. As we learn more about what the maintenance of the facility looks like, we want to outline who is responsible for what areas. Right now, we're just working closely together to make sure things get taken care of, but we'd like to formalize that as well as formalize the funding for that. In terms of projects that myself and my staff are working on, the first and foremost is maintenance, we're keeping the site safe as far as being able to access the roads that get down there. We've got a seasonal technician who's doing some of that work, removing fencing that could tangle up animals and that sort, and also we installed new fencing along West Riverview Drive, which is the road to the south, and that was just to replace the existing fence that was there in, in poor repair. We're working toward permitting this property for water reuse, that's a multi-year process. The next step of that will be to conduct a hydrogeological study, let's put that in to see if I could say the whole word. What that is, is to investigate the groundwater beneath the surface of the land, and we're negotiating a contract with that, which we'll be bringing forward to you in hopefully the next council meeting. The University of Idaho is also interested in doing some water uptake research on the forest itself, that fits in really nicely with what we want to use it for, so we're partnering with them and supporting that research on the property. And in terms of infrastructure, we're conducting two major upgrades that apply to water reuse, that is upgrading our treatment facility, we have design underway on the upgrades necessary to produce reused water. And then we're also currently in negotiations for a project to upgrade our outfall, which is where the water from the treatment facility goes into the river. When we look at upgrading that, we're going to create a contract that will also bring water across the river to this site. So once those two things are in place, we can actually start applying water when the permitting is complete, which is a step ahead of that.
From the park's standpoint, we've had a number of projects that have been active over the past year and a half, and wanted to kind of give you up to speed on what activities have happened that way, as well as what we have ongoing for this coming summer. As you drive along West Riverview Drive, approximately a year ago, we started construction on a trailhead at that location, consistent of a gravel, trail, parking area. Within recreation-type facilities, we still need to get accessible routes to it, to the trailhead, to stay consistent with the direction within the ADA. So we have an ADA parking space and also accessible restroom facilities that were installed as a part of that. Development impact fees were utilized for that construction. We also drafted a forest stewardship plan that was, that was conducted as a part of an attempt to utilize US Forest Service grant to purchase the May property, that was one of the steps of that grant application. But it also is something that will fold into further work as we start to look at a silvicultural plan on the water reclamation side, that's a requirement of that permit for a land application. But it also had other components that relate to other uses of the site and help direct some of our efforts as it relates to noxious weed control, existence of different flora and fauna and animals on the site, and then also some of the recreation components, there is a recreation component to that forest stewardship plan. Largely, that was the initial direction that we had as it related to our trail plan and that map that we showed at this front end of the presentation, and the efforts that our staff has, has been going on in, in the development of the map itself and the initial work that we've been completing on the site. As far as the actual trail work on the site has been going this, this past year, our primary goal has been developing trail connections between existing roadways that maybe don't link up, because we had two different parcels that were owned, well, three different parcels that have been owned by different families over the years and all had different intents, largely timber resources that they were trying to. largely timber resources that they were trying to extract from the property. So they installed roadways to be able to conduct those activities. So as you try to move between those individual parcels, there were some dead-end roads that could easily be connected with a short little trail section. We've worked to do that, and I would say that those trails are roughed in. They are in some cases very rough condition, and you can, you can make out that there's a corridor that you can generally walk through along those lines. The other areas that we've been trying to define trails are those areas where we know the public is going to want to be, largely next to the river. And there were no existing trails. So we wanted to try to identify a location where those people can begin to recreate and can begin to function in an area that it's not going to create resource damage that we'll have to then go back in and, and repair as naturalized settings. Those social trails that end up in places where you might not want them, trying to go back and rehab those locations and trying to steer public as they increasingly utilize a site, those efforts are often futile and take a lot of resources to try to manage. Along those same lines, we're working on installation of trail signage and trail blazing along the trails so that these trails that are in this roughed-in condition, we can identify or people can identify where they're supposed to be or where they're at on a facility. Hopefully, that'll also help some of the efforts in emergency response because it is a big site. Rough trail mileage, a little over 12 miles total on the site. So it's an extensive trail network or road network, combination thereof, having that sort of information so that the public can communicate, I'm on a blue circle or I'm on a red diamond trail. That begins to start to narrow down where these individuals might be if we have to go in and find somebody on the site. Or even just when they call into the office and say, I don't really know where I'm at, how do I get back out of here? We can say, well, walk towards the sun or...
Go towards the light.
It, it sounds funny, but those, those phone calls do happen, and on rare occasion, we have to go out and help navigate in and out of these properties. So we've also engaged a couple of volunteer organizations, one that we have a longstanding relationship with, the Cootney Climbers Organization. The May property, as that purchase was secured, we secured a resource that has been long utilized by our public and as trespassers onto the May property. There's a, there's been a number of bolted routes that have been installed on what was called outlaw wall because it was trespassing onto the May's property. That is now a wall that is within our system, and Cootney Climbers are working to update that infrastructure back up and consistent with what we have elsewhere within the park. So we've partnered with them on a cost share for the bolts, and then the volunteer effort is going in to manage that climbing infrastructure. They also have, in the following year, newfound wall, which is also on the May property. They're going to be going through and replacing bolts on that wall that, once again, were installed on, on private land. We're also working with Lake City Trail Builders. They've identified or have expressed interest and did really, really early on in this process as, as the discussions or as it became known, the public was going to own this piece of property in identifying routes for mountain bike uses. And two of the trail connections that have been roughed in are consistent with that recreation use plan within the draft forest stewardship plan and likely going to be something that can be long-term sustainable as we start to increase the wastewater activity on the site. So we're gauging them on helping to finalize those trail sections and have given them permission to conduct that work on the site. We're seeing work happen out there, whether it's being directed or not. So having an agency or an organization that is active in the community, that we have contacts with other agencies that have worked with this organization and seen that they have the ability to develop and create sustainable trails, having that knowledge and being able to direct those resources and that, that community input and effort in a direction that's productive long-term for us is a positive thing. So it's great to have them onboard. We've also established a monthly volunteer opportunity for folks that want to do anything from helping us install that trail blazing, which consists of 1,400 individual signs over that 12-mile trail, trail system. People that want to help maintain those facilities after they go in or just picking up trash and that sort of thing. We've scheduled a monthly cleanup on the fir, second Saturday of every month. We advertised that in our spring recreation, our summer recreation brochure, which included the trail map for the facility. Mentioned those two recreation partnerships. There's also opportunity for further recreation partnerships moving forward, and we've had some interest in an uptick in interest for commercial use of the site, both from for-profit and nonprofit organizations. Right now, that's largely in the climbing community, individuals that are wanting to utilize the facility for climbing camps, classes, and instructional, as well as to support their sales of equipment and such. That's a new dynamic for us to manage as a recreation entity, and we're working through some of those processes, and likely you'll see us coming back with some kind of a policy that will be adopted or will be asking for you to adopt or, or give us direction on sometime in the near future.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's always nice to see a piece of property like that that'll serve dual purposes, you know, for both the, both the wastewater side and the recreation side. So I appreciate your presentation. Steve?
Quick question for Brian. Are dogs, are dogs welcome up there?
Dogs are allowed onsite, and because it is a city property, dogs are on leash. Once again, we don't allow dogs off-leash within city, city-managed facilities.
Good job. Good job, guys. Just not in the park. Thank you very much.
Yeah, just not in the park. Correct. The way we've kind of worked with that is the, the parking facilities, you have them on leash and get yourself to the trails.
Yeah. Go to the west. Thank you. Next item up, appointed officials ordinance amendment.
Good evening. So in the packet is a memo, speaking to the current ordinance that the city has regarding appointed officials. The titles of some of those positions is inaccurate. We've updated them over the timeframe. That original ordinance was adopted back in, I think, about 2008 to 2010. We also are only required to appoint by law the city clerk, our legal attorney, and our finance director, treasurer. But the city is, in the past, has a standard, has appointed all the department heads. At one point, the human resource director was removed from that, and so we're adding that position back in as an appointed official. And we are splitting back the public services director into a public works director and a community development director. We're also removing the duties. That's not the appropriate place for those to be listed, and so Warren has removed that from the actual appointment ordinance. I can take any questions.
Any questions, Shelley? Makes sense. And do we need an action on that?
There is an ordinance to be adopted. I think it's...
Oh, there it is. I'm sorry, missed the second one.
Yeah.
Thank you, Shelley, very much.
You're welcome.
Next item up are ordinances and resolutions, and there are several.
Move, do you want me to go, Mayor?
It's all yours.
Move to place the ordinance wireless telecommunications on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, amending municipal code of the city of Post Falls, repealing section 1824-100 and adopting a new chapter 18.26 regulating wireless communication facilities, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance wireless telecommunications and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number, and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Move to place the ordinance appointed officials amendment on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item is beyond green.
Move to place the ordinance beyond green annexation tech park file number A-17-05 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item, item D was removed, so the next item is Haven North.
Move to place the ordinance Haven North annexation file ANNX-004-2018 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon? Please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Yes.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item is beyond green.
Move to place the ordinance beyond green annexation tech park file number A-17-05 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon? Please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item, item D was removed, so the next item is Haven North.
Move to place the ordinance Haven North annexation file ANNX-004-2018 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon? Please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item is beyond green.
Move to place the ordinance beyond green annexation tech park file number A-17-05 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon? Please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls and Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for annexation of property consisting of approximately 245 acres located in the east one-half of section 24 and the northeast one-quarter of section 25, township 51, North Range, five west Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, and zoning of said annexed property as technology mixed, providing for the amendment to the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
Move to approve the ordinance beyond green annexation tech park file number A-17-05 to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon?
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item, item D was removed, so the next item is Haven North.
Move to place the ordinance Haven North annexation file ANNX-004-2018 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon? Please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Yes.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls and Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for annexation of property consisting of approximately one acre located on a portion of tract 13, block 35, Post Falls irrigated tracts. According to the plat recorded in book C of Platts at page 78, records of Cootney County, Idaho, and zoning of said annexed property as medium-density, multifamily residential R2, providing for the amendment to the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.